And you are live.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to another Victor Central School District Town Hall through Facebook Live. This is Tim Terranova, the proud superintendent of the Victor Central School District. And we have some fantastic guests with us tonight. We have Angela Affronte, our Director of Technology with us, along with two masterful teachers. We have Kristy Gordon, teacher at the Junior High School, and Maggie Elliott, Library and Media Specialist at the Intermediate Building. So, we're obviously going to talk about technology a little bit tonight. That's something that we're all immersed in and have been immersed in over the last few months. As you know, these town halls typically go from 6:30 till about 7:30. We'll have our awesome guests on for relatively about a half an hour to 40 minutes. They're going to talk about, really try to focus on that relationship between home and school, and the use of technology, navigating technology, and really give the community a clear look at what we're trying to do in terms of that relationship between home and school, especially around that fancy term called digital platforms that you've all been working with at home with your kids. So, we'll talk a lot about that. And then, when they're finished, we should have a few more minutes. I'll give you a few more updates from the district perspective. As we always do, we'll look for your questions on Facebook Live, try to answer some of them tonight. And certainly, if we don't get to them, we will answer them over the next couple of days, as we always do. This is taped, so you could watch the video multiple times at your convenience. So, without further ado, I think I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Affronte. Welcome, Angela. Thanks for being here. And talk to us just generally around, you know, maybe just for a second, about your role in the district and what you want to discuss tonight with the Victor community.
Yeah, so thank you, Tim, for having me tonight. So, I'm on month six or seven of this job, and it has been a great learning experience for me. And it's also been great to build relationships with our fabulous teaching staff, including our teacher librarians. And we have Kristy Gordon on here as well. They've just been a great support network for me. So, my role in the district is, you know, I'd like to say I wear many hats. I lead in the instructional technology efforts. I like to work collaboratively with our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Kristin Spahn. And I also really like to make sure that we are moving the technology forward and spending our funds with what the teachers need. So, this year, we've purchased some second monitors for our teachers at the high school. That was a need that was identified, and we were able to purchase those. We also were able to get some microphones for the synchronous instruction coming up in February that Kristy's going to talk a lot more. So, I kind of do a mix between instructional world and the IT world. And I just wanted to give you a brief overview of some things the Technology Department has done since my arrival in July and some new initiatives we have. So, I'm going to just share my screen. I only have a couple of slides tonight. So, basically, I just wanted to let you know that the Victor Schools, we have been really embracing this bring your own device policy. And that kind of stemmed from realizing and looking at the numbers that we only had enough Chromebooks for roughly one-third to one-half of our student body. And we really wanted to make sure that students were able to bring their own device in order for us to distribute those Chromebooks to students that needed them. So, what we did is we embraced, again, this bring your own device policy. We have students using their own MacBook, laptop, iPad, Chromebook, and they are bringing that back and forth. Students are able to get on our guest network, sign in with their @VictorSchools account, and have a relatively same to similar experience than a student using a district-issued Chromebook. And doing this blended approach to issuing Chromebooks to students that are district property, and then also having this bring your own device, we are able to get to that one-to-one model that we're really trying to strive for. So, if we look at the number of Chromebooks distributed, we're up to 1,455. This number lasted the sheet in November. At the end of the month, it jumped maybe 50 or 60. So, you know, Maggie's shaking her head. She knows that we've really been distributing more Chromebooks to kids that need them. We have some that were out for service that are now back that we're able to distribute. We have some that we're reallocating. So, we are able to try to work with our buildings, and specifically, our librarians are huge on this to really make sure we're getting students Chromebooks that need them, students that don't have their own device, that are unable to interact and engage with our students at home. We do have new parents coming in and moving into the Victor community, and we are able to try to accommodate them if they are in need. So, that's something that we're seeing mid-year. There is some transition. We work with our pupil personnel office to make sure, you know, those families get what they need. This number, I'm assuming, will go up. It can't go up too much more because our supply is dwindling, but we are able to kind of month by month really get devices to those who need. In addition to this number, we have devices at each building that are able to be signed out and used. In addition, Chromebooks, obviously, we need to have an internet source, Wi-Fi source, for them to be used. So, we actually purchased 50 hotspots back in, I don't know, August it was, the Green Finger League, Sosies. And we just handed out hotspot number 50 this week. So, we are now, we've handed everything out. In the transition, like I said, families move in, some families move out. We actually got a couple of hotspots returned that we're going to work with Sosies to get those ready if they need to be handed out to families. So, this number, obviously, in August, when we ordered 50, I didn't know really if we were going to use all 50 because from March to June, the previous school year, they only distributed around 30. So, this is a jump from the past school year with this exposure and COVID. But we really want to make sure our families and our students are able to connect to their device to make sure they can engage with our teachers. So, one thing else that we really wanted to do was ensure there's a way for parents to get help. So, we do have an email, establishtechhelp@victorschools.org. And we try to get back to the parents within 24 to 48 hours and make sure if they have an issue, we're able to work with them and either replace the Chromebook, get a new one, break the Chromebook in for service, or if they're having issues regarding a Google Classroom assignment, maybe connect them with whoever needs to help them there. So, different things. We're fielding all sorts of questions today. Just trying to think, we had a question regarding the Chromebook being in a different language. So, we were able to walk the parent through and switch that. So, just, we're trying to field and answer those questions. Back to our librarians. So, they have been huge and instrumental. I went to Maggie, I don't know, August, September, and I said, Maggie, we're rolling out this one-to-one environment. You know, tell me if you think that this is something our librarians can help with. And she said, hands down, absolutely, and they have been key in this. And this picture right here, what you're looking at is Linda Tabit, our librarian at the junior high. She was able to put charging stations around the junior high school for kids that maybe left their charger that needed to get a charge during the day. And also, our librarians, they're able to troubleshoot and be that first line of defense if something's not working with their Chromebook. They can kind of look at it. They can say, okay, maybe here's a new one, or this is how we can fix it. So, they've really stepped up, and they've gone above and beyond the role of a traditional librarian to basically being our front lines with students and even with families, working as the liaison between our department and the families. So, a huge shout out to them, and you know, that's again, another reason why I really wanted Maggie here because they are, they've been great to work with. And as far as where we're kind of going with technology, our Technology Planning Committee will be meeting in March, and we'll be discussing what model are we looking at for next school year? Are we continuing with our mixed environment? Are we going to be collecting Chromebooks and reissuing? What is our plan? So, we're going to be really working through those steps with the Planning Committee. The last thing I wanted to talk to you guys about is attendance in school tool. So, school tool is, we call it our SIS, Student Information System. School tool houses all of our student data. If we need to call a parent and say, hey, you know, this, something's going on here. What's, your child is absent, etc. Everything's housed in school tool. And it's also where our state reporting kind of gets pulled from. So, we needed to make sure there was a systematic way for our kids to take attendance when they were at home and learning remotely. So, we do have kids that are 100% remote. And then, we have kids that maybe they attend Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they're learning remotely. So, the days that they're learning remotely, students, 7-12, they pretty much do it themselves. They log in with their credentials, and then they're able to get their attendance submitted before 8:30 in the morning. And that way, we're able to look and see what kids are absent and try to justify or rectify those absences. So, school tool has been part of our students' lives at the secondary level for quite some time because they use it to check grades. This is the first time we've really did an attendance feature in school tool. The K6 level, I think this was obviously something new. They're not used to logging in and looking at their grades like our older students were. So, this is something that they, you know, quickly got used to. September, October, we're really able to get that school tool login. And then, also, they're clicking okay that they have a plan for learning. So, we're able to count attendance for them at those days. So, and with that, Kristy Gordon is going to talk a lot more about school tool, and she is going to give you like the teacher slash parent perspective for us. So, Kristy is, you know, I think I met you, Kristy, what, in July, when I first came here? And Kristy said, you know, Antaqua, a Google-certified educator. I'm scheduling all these PDs. I'm working with the Teacher Center. So, Kristy and I immediately, I knew I couldn't go to her for advice and get some ideas from her. So, Kristy's been training our teachers like crazy on Google Classroom. She's also one of our school tool turnkey trainers, and she is an art teacher at the junior high, and she advises many clubs. She's very involved, and sometimes she has not time to do it all. So, I'm glad Kristy could be here with us. So, I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you. Piggybacking off of school tool, there's a lot that school tool can do for you as a parent and a student, and it really depends on which building you're in, which age level. So, for UPK through three, really, you're just using it for your daily attendance. Once you hit the four through six levels, no, it's not just daily attendance. Now, you can see report card information. You can also view your student's IEP or 504. So, obviously, you're going to receive one from the school in a hard document format, but it's nice on the fly if you need to see something that you can access it there. Your personal info and contacts are also there, so you can check and make sure that everything is up to date. For 7-12, it expands further. In addition to teaching at VCS for 13 years, I also have a 17-year-old, and we use school tool as a parent. So, I can shed a little bit of light on some helpful tips and tricks. First, just so you know, for seven through 12, you can, of course, access report cards. You can have access to IEP and 504s as well, individual assessment scores, assignment scores, current average by course. You can look up their student's schedule, and then, of course, the personal info and the contacts. When you are checking grades in school tool, it can be a little frustrating if you're not quite sure where to go, whether you're in the web version or the mobile version. Checking grades, if you would like to know, how is my student doing right now, not the report card grade? It's really important that you go to the assignments tab instead of the grades tab. Then, you can select sort by course, and you will get an average that is current for each of the courses. You select the course, and you can see the assignments, the scores that they received. You can see if there possibly are comments as well. If you see a blank score, for example, nothing out of 12, it means that a grade has not been recorded. It does not equate to a zero. If the assignment is a zero out of 12, it's a zero. If you see something like an M, an MI, an A, an I, something specific like that, then you just should inquire with the teacher if you don't know what it means. They are unique to each teacher. They're not universal over the entire district. Then again, though, if you do want to see the report card averages, grades, is where you're going to want to go. And then, shifting to Google Classroom, as Angela said, I've been training a lot of our staff over the years in Google Classroom, and this year, of course, more than ever over the summer and last spring. And there's a lot of really good things that you can know about Google Classroom. One thing is we're using it across the entire district. So, the benefits of this is that all the students on campus use the same method for retrieving content from all the teachers, regardless of what grade level they are, regardless of what classes they're taking. So, parents, hopefully, that has been helpful, that there isn't a million different locations where you're finding the workload. It also means that the students only have to go to one location. There might be a supplemental ed puzzle or a website to visit or maybe check out my personal, you know, school website because there's some information on it. But ultimately, everything is being delivered through school or through Google Classroom. The other benefit is that it is paperless, but it has the option of being printed. And for students who require an audio version, it's easily translatable for them. And of course, any device can access it, though I will say, mobile devices like phones, they're not easy. It's possible, but they are a little bit more challenging. The kids are way more successful when they're on some sort of tablet, desktop, or a laptop. Some really cool tips and tricks that can help you and your students. Google Classroom grade books are not necessarily going to equal the school tool grade books. Teachers may have participation grades. They might have a quick little check-in that they didn't put into Google Classroom out of respect for the students and the parents, so they don't have to organize through everything. It's a lot if you keep putting in every single tiny little assignment in Google Classroom. Students will get a much clearer view of the current assignments that they are working on and that are going to be due soon if they use the Classwork tab instead of the Stream. The Classwork tab has different topics. And the Stream is just a running feed of information, 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 and it can look very messy for a student. To streamline it even further, you can click on a single topic, and that'll open up just the assignments, the material, questions, quizzes, just in that one topic, which can also make it really easy for kids to just focus a little bit more on a few things rather than everything. The to-do list option that is in Google Classroom can be super helpful. However, it is not 100% reliable. Not everything ends up into that do list for various reasons. So, if a student is only looking at their to-do list to check for work that they need to complete, there's a chance that they might be missing something. Another tip for parents and students, when an assignment is completed, it's submitted, and then a teacher returns it with a grade, it's super important that the students go back in and check. A lot of times, teachers will add comments, opportunities to improve the grade, or just, you're going to be assessed on this later. You need to know what didn't go right, and we want you to know what did go right so that you, you're aware. When an assignment is turned in or submitted, it also does not mean that it's complete. It is super possible for a student to submit a blank or partially complete assignment, and at first glimpse, it looks like it's all set, and it's not. So, in order to check that, you could go into the assignment and check it out, but then ultimately, the teacher is going to assess it and provide feedback for the student. What you can expect for second semester, as we shifted the 7-12 into a four-days-of-instruction model, which is so different from what we have been doing, is some things are going to be the same and some things are going to be different. So, in order to be successful, students really need to Zoom and use Google Classroom. You can't do one or the other. You have to combine them together. When a student is in a class and a lesson is in progress and process, it is really important to have everything open that they possibly can. When you're looking at these lessons from your own device, a lot of times, it looks very different from the way that the teacher's going to present it. Maybe the teacher's using a Mac and the student's using a Chromebook. Maybe they have a slightly different browser, and everything looks a little bit different. And so, it's good when the kids can make the connections between what they're seeing at home and what they're seeing at school, right, live while they're trying to do the work. It's great for students to be doing the instruction, to be present, and to do all the work right alongside their peers and their teacher instead of saving it for later. They are going to be more successful. The teacher is going to engage the students who are on Zoom. So, it's really, it could probably, it could be potentially embarrassing if all of a sudden, oh, that student's not there. So, be ready for it. They're going to say hello. They're going to ask you questions. And keep all of your physical materials organized and present always, especially since we're traveling back and forth from home to school, school to home, and you might need something in both locations. Last, just really quickly, four days of instruction does not mean the following. It does not mean more workload, especially at the 7-12 buildings. We've been very conscientious of doing what we can to make sure everything is attainable that we assign to students. And we do not want anybody to think that we're going to increase the workload just because we're now in four days of instruction. It will mean that we'll have more group and one-on-one time between teachers and students. We'll see that the content will be distributed differently. Students will perform more tasks and complete more assignments during class time with teacher assistance rather than just on their own remotely. They'll get the support they need. And teachers can further support students' success and remain flexible. We'll still be as flexible as we ever were using the fully remote learning model that some students have already been experiencing this entire first semester. So, we're really getting the knack of this. We're figuring this out. And so, the students who are coming in second semester that are trying this model for the first time, they're going to see that the teachers have their backs. We've got this. So, now, I would like to turn it over to Maggie Elliott, who is the Library Department Chair, and she's also the Intermediate School Technology Coordinator.
Hey, Kristy, can I say one thing?
Oh, yeah.
You got great dogs in your house.
They're so loud. I'm so sorry.
They weren't that loud. How many you got? Three?
Yes.
They were cool. They were so well behaved.
I took them on four walks today.
That's awesome. There was a question around whether there's an app for school tool. Is that?
There is, yes.
Okay.
So, when you, when you get the app, the biggest component that you want to have prepared is you need the URL for Victor. Because, for example, my son goes to Fairport, so it's an entirely different URL. So, the website, I believe, the VCS website for the Tech Department has the URL for that. And then, you plug that in, and you are set to go, and it's amazing. And then, you can save your passwords. You don't have to remember it, and you can get in and check grades whenever you want.
And then, another question asked, and I don't know if this is possible, was like, can you separate like the blue cohort, gold cohort, and 100% virtual kids in terms of their Google Classroom? Or is it, do we have to lump all three groups of students work into one classroom? I'm not sure what that exactly means, but I didn't know if anyone could answer that question.
From the teacher perspective, there have been, going into this, different philosophies. And initially, the bulk of the teachers realized that if you separate everybody out by cohorts, it's a lot of extra work. It means you've got a lot of different Google Classrooms to maintain, which also then, as it is, teachers are making mistakes all the time. I mean, it's just, it's a lot of tech, and so, we do make mistakes. So, then, I think that having one Google Classroom per cohort is just going to add more mistakes. But I do think some teachers have given it a try.
Great. Thank you. Do you want to turn it up? Maggie, you want to take over?
I'll jump in. So, I have the privilege of representing the Library Department and talk about technology. And my broad topic is, where do you go if you need help? What's available in terms of online resources to our students? And so, I'll start with, because Angela started with this, you know, where do you go if you need help with technology? So, obviously, there is that tech help at Victor Schools email address, which you can use to get that help, particular for our remote families who don't have the opportunity to visit someone in the school. If it's an instructional question, if it's based on an assignment, then obviously, your first question is going to go to that teacher to see if it's just a link that's listed wrong, or if you can't, you know, there's something that's wrong. But if there is truly a tech problem, the Library and Media Specialists in each building are often the tech coordinators in each building. So, we're often that next line of defense. Teachers will turn students over to us so we can try and troubleshoot. If we can't answer that question, we reach out to the Tech Department. So, we're kind of levels of help. Start with the teacher, then you can go to that librarian, and then, we reach out to that Tech Department if we need help. So, there are tech coordinators in every building. Some of us share that honor with other teachers. So, there are not just librarians. There are other teachers that share those roles with us. But librarians have picked up that major role of helping roll out tech help, particularly with devices. So, if you've been issued a student, a district-issued device, the first line of defense is to head to the library if there's a question. We'll try and troubleshoot it. We will put in the help ticket if they're, it needs to be sent out for service, and we will provide a loaner to the students so they have a device to use both at school and at home. So, when it comes to devices, we really have the resources. And school was kind enough to make sure every library was stocked and had the ability to help the students that came in looking for help. We loan Chromebooks every day to students who need one to use during the school day, as well as provide those long-term loaners for those devices that need to be repaired. I just recently reached out because we've gone through our number of Chromebooks, and we've given them out to kids that needed to have ones repaired. And Angela sent, her department sent some right over so that we have more to loan. I'd say, any given day in my library, we loan Chromebooks probably to 40 to 50 kids a day to give them a device to use. So, that's where you're going to go to for device help, is to head to the library. Angela didn't mention this, but she could always probably share that waitlist link. There is the district waitlist. It's on the tech page. But if you are looking for a device and you are not on the waitlist, that's that first step to getting a district-issued device. You saw those numbers. We don't have a lot of devices left, but that's how you're going to get one. And the librarians in the buildings are helping facilitate that. I regularly check it. If we have new students, I check in to see if they have a device, if they're bringing their own, or if they're waiting for a district-issued device. So, we facilitate that. Another thing I deal with a lot is a program called ClassLink. And it's basically a program that allows you to access a lot of web-based applications, and it has the benefit of remembering usernames and passwords. And for intermediate school, it's that first line of defense. Our kids log into ClassLink when they log into their Chromebooks. So, it manages the multiple usernames and passwords that a lot of these applications need. And so, instead of kids having to remember multiple usernames and passwords, they just have to be able to log into ClassLink. Now, ClassLink doesn't play well with other browsers. It does work best in the Chrome browser. It does need a Chrome extension added, a one-time extension. But if you're finding you're frustrated with ClassLink at home, reach out for that tech help because we can get you to add that extension, and hopefully, that single sign-on capability will work a lot more smoothly. There is an app available. I have it on my iPhone. But again, it is connected to that Google single sign-on, so that Chrome connection is really key. If ClassLink happens to be down, and it has gone down a couple of times when web servers have gone down nationwide, you can always get to those Google apps like Classroom and Gmail without going through ClassLink. The benefit of teaching our kids to go through ClassLink is there's tons of other resources in ClassLink. Now, I couldn't name all the resources. I had to brainstorm with Angela because I know my building really well, but we have five buildings. K12 in ClassLink, all students are going to see all the Google apps. They're going to see school tool. They're going to see Flipgrid. But you're going to see other applications, K6. You're going to see ABC Yaw, Epic, Adobe Spark, SplashLearn. At 7-12, you'll see the links for Navium, the Noodle Tool, Castle Learning, and Project Lead the Way. So, it's a way for the district to put all those links in one place. So, it's like a one-stop shopping for our kid. And in grades four through 12, you'll see access to Sora, which is our ebook database. And what I want to tell you as a parent, that if you have kids in different buildings, their ClassLink is going to look different. There are apps that are going to be there for early childhood students that aren't necessarily going to be there for high school students because their ClassLink is really tailored to the different levels. There are so many online resources that people have access to. The librarians are all working very hard to get books to kids and physical books, ebooks. We're going to classes. Kids are coming to us. Kids are making requests online. So, you know, getting access to reading is still going on in this environment. But we also are providing access to electronic resources. When kids are coming on these different schedules, that learning still needs to happen. So, every year, the Library and Media Specialists choose some databases that meet the curriculum needs of the students in their building. Like, the early childhood school has PebbleGo. It's a great introduction to informational text. And the primary school uses Myon and PebbleGo and PK Life Science. In the intermediate, we use things like TrueFlix and PebbleGoNext and Sora. The junior and senior high have too many for me to even mention, Opposing Viewpoints, all the GAL databases. So, each library selects several databases. And then, we also work with our building principals and the Tech Department to add any of those requests that come in. Our building asked for full vocabulary this year. So, we worked with Angela to find a way to make that purchase happen so our students would have that resource. So, I can't tell you what every kid in every building is going to have access to, but I can tell you they were chosen thoughtfully. They meet curriculum needs, and we really thought they were the best products that can help students learn in the environment that we have now. I would encourage you to check out the library webpages for each of the buildings. There's tons of resources, how-to videos. Um, I would encourage you to check out the library webpages for each of the buildings. There's tons of resources, how-to videos. Um, tutorials, links to the databases. And if you have any specific questions about how do you get to something, um, we can help you out with that.
It was great.
Angela, what I missed.
Thank you. Now Maggie, you didn't tell people that your daughter is an incredible teacher in another district.
She is.
I believe, correct?
Thank you, yes.
So not only are you an incredible library media specialist, but you get a lot of tips from your daughter too, who's teaching.
I do.
Yeah.
I do.
It's a dynamic.
She helps me with some of the tech stuff and she is a great, uh, she is a lover of books. So I've succeeded in life.
Yeah, you did a great job. All right. So I, I got a couple of questions for the group. I don't know who answers them, but, uh, I'll just throw them out. Cause I can't answer them, but, um. So, all right, here's one. Sometimes, uh, this is specific to the junior high, but I'm assuming it covers multiple buildings. Assignments come in that this child doesn't do the assignment or isn't able to finish it. Is there some way that parents can get a notification if there's unfinished in-class work? Does anybody?
You can sign up to receive guardian summaries, but in order to be a guardian, you need to be invited by your child's teacher. So you can reach out to your child's teacher, ask to be added as a guardian. You'll accept. Once you accept, then you have settings and you can, um, make sure that the teacher has guardian summaries available as well. And then what that will allow you to do is get a snapshot. I think it's possibly weekly.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that's through what, School Tool?
No, that's through Google Classroom, but ultimately checking School Tool is going to provide the grades. It's going to provide whether something's missing, if it's been graded.
Yeah. And then there was another question, um, why do we need to navigate two tools to figure out? Uh, what is due and what is done? Uh, so do they have to navigate two tools? And I guess the question, uh, if we can answer it is why?
So School Tool is our student information system, and that is where all our grades go. That formulate our report cards, which then is archived, and also we use it to report to the state. So School Tool is like the end-all be-all. Like Christie said, you always like want to go in there and check School Tool. School Tool does not have the functionality to be our learning management system with that paperless workflow we're talking about. So teacher assigns something. Student fills it out, hands it back, gets feedback from the teacher. That all needs to happen on Google Classroom. So there is a, uh, setting that we set up where the School Tool grades are able to merge. I'm sorry, the Google Classroom grades are able to merge with School Tool. However, I think only a couple of teachers are using that and it regardless, like School Tools, the end-all be-all. So like, that's where you're going to want to check the grades. And if there are missing classwork, then you're able to reach out to the teacher. So all the, all the grades, like all the data does go into, to School Tool. So that should be like your first stop shop. And then Google Classroom is more of that day-to-day interaction. And then Christie, Christie or Maggie, I don't know. Did I miss anything? Why we need two platforms? They do different things, Tim. The one thing in common that they do is grading. But the School Tool grades essentially don't mean much. They don't carry much weight. School Tool is the single source for our grades.
Google Classroom is more the instructional piece.
Yeah. Let me ask this to, I think I'll ask this to, to Miss Afronte. What, you started in technically July first, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So what are you most proud of in terms of watching teachers and library media specialists and just the entire district in terms of what's gone on, uh, with instruction and technology over the last seven months or whatever that is? Uh, like what, what, what did you, from the time you started to now, we're in the middle of January. Like what is the biggest difference or most impressive thing that's happened?
There's a couple of things. So I, um, I was meeting with Gordy Baxter, who's one of our BOSI trainers that came in in August. I called him and I said, it is, you know, identified our teachers need help with Google Classroom. And I called Christie as well, and we set up training in August. And this training, Tim, took one hour, two hours, three hours. We had to do it on three different dates. Christie was offering Google Classroom like office hours, right? So we were really, really, really like, it felt like starting from scratch when I got here. We did the same training, Tim, and it took twenty minutes. The teachers know it. They're learning that. Like seeing them grow from August until now, I would say is something that I'm really proud of because we have people like Maggie and Christie in the building that are helping. We have our BOSI support for instructional technology. My background's instructional technology. I've been trying to do what I can. So I really feel like watching our staff grow has been something I'm really, really proud of. And it is something that Gordy and I recently reflected on when we were, um, meeting this week. So I would, I would say that's one of the things that I think that we really. Maggie and Christie, don't you feel like we've moved people? Like your building in particular, I'm sure significantly this year.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, my favorite is when a teacher will pop into my room and they'll just get so excited and they'll tell me what they did and it worked. And yeah, it's awesome.
Yeah, people are feeling more confident, Tim. That's for sure.
And then Maggie and Christie, uh, well, this is to all of you actually, if you want to answer it. You know, we are going to get back to five days a week in-person schools at some point. Uh, I know that's happening. You know, this is, this is temporary right now. You know, what's one or two things you think, you know, from a teacher's perspective, from a library media specialist's perspective? That we're going to use when we get back full-time in person that will help our kids in their education. You know, through what we've learned, uh, with this, with this model and, and technology use.
Well, I think first of all, that making connections to kids hasn't changed, just the format has. So, uh, if some kids feel more comfortable using technology, if ebooks are how they end up preferring to read. We're going to continue to offer that as an option to connect with kids. It's not just going to revert back to the way things were. If some kids feel more comfortable completing work on devices when that wasn't an option before. We're going to continue to offer those choices based on what we've learned through this whole long period where we've had to convert our teaching a little bit.
I would definitely agree with all of that. And then I would add, um, I think a lot of the students have a really, and I'm just an amazing appreciation for what they used to have. And going back into something, whether it's exactly or similar, I, I think that there's that appreciation on both sides, the student and the teacher. And also from my discipline specifically with art, me and Leah Marvin, who teaches in the junior high as well. The two of us have had to create everything from scratch. Like there, we cannot duplicate anything we've ever done because this learning model does not accept it. So while that's been quite a bit of responsibility. It has built our portfolio of options for the kids so much. And I'm so excited to, to try some of the things that we've done this year with a longer format, with more days and everybody in person. It, it's very exciting.
Awesome. Angela, you want to add anything to that question or?
Yeah, just thinking, um, post-COVID, I mean, sometimes students have to take, uh, they have a medical reason where they can't come to school for two or months or two weeks. So I imagine that, or I'm hopeful that we're going to use what we've learned during this to kind of like bring education to kids maybe who traditionally couldn't be in a school setting. So a, a student gets mono and they can't come to school for a month. Well, why can't we suit them in, or why can't we, um, have them engage on Google Classroom? So I think there's a lot of things that we've learned that we can continue to use even when this is over. And then I, I visited Christie's classroom a lot and I am impressed with, she did really, you know, she took up reworking the curriculum. But also having that choice-based model for her students. So in her classroom, the kids are not working on the same project. They are able to really think about what interests them, what inspires them. And then think creatively to bring that to art. And I, I think that's something that I really would like to see more of is we're engaging students, um, on choice and student-based projects.
Great. So I want to thank all three of you for joining me, uh, tonight. You know, first of all, Angela, thanks for leading the, uh, the charge with technology integration in our district. You've been a fantastic hire for us and somebody who's really made a huge difference, uh, especially in your collaboration with teachers and staff. Um, as, as Christie and, and, um, Maggie said, you know, you, you're trying things for the new, the first time. All of, all of our teachers are, hundreds of teachers are trying things and creating things from scratch. And, um, there is no one size that fits. And, and many, sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't work, which is normal. And it's, uh, what I love is the, I guess the, for the cliche standpoint, the can-do attitude of our staff. You know, that when things don't quite work, you learn from it and actually get better from it and understand that that's normal. And I think Christie and Maggie are great role models for that, uh, just always pushing the envelope and working with others and trying to make the best of this unique situation that we ultimately then, when we do get back to full-time, will utilize to our advantage. And I, I really appreciate that. So thanks all three of you for your leadership. Uh, and taking some time tonight and sharing your thoughts and expertise with us. Really appreciate it. Um, and so I'll stay on for a few minutes and just give the, the public some updates. Again, thanks Angela. Thanks Christie and Maggie. Uh, great job tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Uh, all right. So, uh, just, uh, let's see, I'm going to do three different updates and then some shout-outs to everyone. Or not to everyone, but just to you about some people. Uh, first of all, COVID communication. Uh, as you probably heard, we minimized the letters. We were communicating memos and letters home every day, uh, in terms of new cases. We're still continuing to keep the cases updated on a daily basis, but they're on our website. So please go to our website, victorschools.org if you are interested in, in seeing the daily updates, Monday through Friday. Uh, I will give you an update every Friday on the COVID numbers that afternoon as part of my community message. Uh, but we're trying to, you know, get away from the daily messages, which I know can, uh, can be a little bit time-consuming for everyone. So, so we're continuing to update the numbers, active numbers, current numbers. Uh, students and staff, it's just you go to our website and you see that chart every day under the COVID update. Um, we're right around two hundred and eight to two hundred and ten total cases right now. Uh, we're in the twenties. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head in terms of active cases, so we're holding our own. Um, I know there's been some, uh, classrooms quarantined where, uh, because of some different cases, we've, we've the health department has recommended we quarantine a classroom or even, uh, an athletic team just for precautionary reasons. I fully anticipate uh, that, uh, when that happens, which has happened in the past, that we don't get any cases during the quarantine, which shows that what we're doing is working. Uh, but the health department is being very cautious about, uh, about those quarantines, obviously right now as we move into the vaccine stage of the situation. In terms of vaccinations, um, you, you know, you've read the news, I'm sure. We're at a very low, uh, supply right now in all counties, including Ontario County. We have a system set up, uh, to utilize, uh, a pot of vaccinations right on our district, right at our district for our staff. Uh, who, who desperately needs it. I know some individual members of the staff are getting vaccinations in other areas and other, uh, locations. Based upon availability, but right now we're waiting for a greater supply. I have another meeting with the county health department on Friday. Uh, to get an update on the supply chain and see if that supply will be growing. And if we can get, um, as soon as possible, when that supply is enough. Get some sessions over here right in the district so our staff doesn't have to go get vaccinated. Uh, so that we can get as many, uh, of our staff who are interested vaccinated as soon as possible. Again, that's a, that's a situation that the state's dealing with, with, as you probably have been also dealing with in terms of vaccine supply. But we're definitely focused on that and, and trying to increase that. We know that, that when we can get our public, our adults vaccinated, it's going to support, uh, us and our ability to come back to school full-time, which is our goal. And it has always been our goal in a safe manner. Uh, in terms of, uh, I want to talk just for a second about extracurricular activities and athletics. You know, I do that often. You're seeing more and more, uh, advocacy on social media, especially around the bringing back athletics, especially what they call high-risk athletics. In this case, in winter, it'd be hockey, uh, basketball, girls and boys' basketball, wrestling and competitive cheerleading. Um, there's also a situation in the fall where we weren't able to have, uh, football and volleyball. Uh, for example, as athlete, as sporting events that were considered high-risk, they're slated for March if we're able to have them. Uh, I've been doing a lot of research, talking to a lot of folks around this concept. As you know, we've been, uh, very successful bringing back, uh, other athletic events, other sports. Uh, some significant extracurricular activities, uh, such as, uh, jazz ensembles. Uh, a Vype, uh, performing percussion group, uh, certainly our marching band and our winter guard. Uh, and our performing arts, different, a variety of plays and some that are coming up. So we are, we are doing what we can to try to get as much as possible. Uh, student experiences, uh, in these experiences that are outside of school to keep things as normal as possible. And those critical experiences that kids love and are important, uh, going on. Uh, I am a strong advocate, uh, to resume these, uh, sports, uh, such as hockey, basketball. Um, wrestling and competitive cheerleading. I think, uh, if you, if you watch our, uh, the work that our director of health, physical education, athletics, Mr. Weimer has done around setting up the protocols along with other A.D.s in the area to make this as safe as possible. Uh, we have the data that shows it's safe. We have the ways to do it. Um, it certainly would be different, uh, potentially no spectators. Uh, certainly opportunities potentially even to test the student athletes, uh, on a regular basis if parents were willing to do that. Uh, but there's lots of specific ideas to make it successful. And as superintendent, I'm a strong advocate for that because I think right now we're limiting possibilities for kids. Uh, it's tough enough not to be able to have kids in school five days a week, which is what we want. And we need to do that when we can in a safe manner. And the thing that's keeping us from that right now in Victor is the social distancing requirement. And the space and staffing requirements based on that. But we understand that social distancing requirement is incredibly important. And certainly we're going to follow and continue to follow health and safety guidelines on it. Uh, but in terms of this athletics in this case, uh, similar to, uh, arts and music and other, uh, extracurricular experiences, we believe we can do that in a safe manner. We can space it out. Uh, we can have, uh, smaller groups participate and certainly in a competition. Uh, it's not the same as a day in school when you have thousands of kids there. Um, and there's research that says you can do it safely. So I'd encourage you to read some of that on our website. Uh, especially our athletic website and our social media sites, especially Twitter and Facebook. Uh, we've, uh, and I know I want to thank Mr. Weimer for his, uh, advocacy for this. Uh, but I want to, as superintendent, say that I think it's time we do start these high-risk, what are called high-risk, which is to me, a, a bad misnomer, uh, athletics at this point. Hopefully we can do the fall athletics as well. And then continue to do these other critical, critically important experiences for kids. You know, and I could mention seven, ten of them, you know, whether it's robotics, whether it's some, the high school musical. Uh, and certainly as we get into the spring with the senior events that are so critical and junior events like the ball and the prom. And senior day and certainly graduation. So we believe that if we can start doing these other experiences, which we would know we can do in a safe matter, it, manner, it'll show. You know, the public that this can be done, which should support hopefully the ability to bring kids back five days a week as soon as we can. Uh, and do it safely. So that's my little soapbox on that piece. I'll talk more about that. Um, but I just wanted people to know that we can do this and we can do it in a safe manner. We're going to, we are going to be very positive and promoting around getting kids experiences, uh, that they deserve. Uh, tied to this certainly is money, uh, and, and, and I segue into that because we are moving into the budget season. Uh, we had a, uh, board meeting last Thursday where we talked a little bit about the budget. We actually did it in the December and the January meeting. And then we have a really important, uh, next Thursday, January twenty-eighth, budget workshop that's for the public. It's a workshop between the board and, uh, members of district office to really hash out more specifically. What's the budget look like, uh, as we move through the, through the spring, hopefully soon, as soon to be the spring and move into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That's going to be an important budget workshop at six P.M. on Thursday, January twenty-eighth. That will also be through Zoom. Uh, it will be recorded, uh, which will then lead to two budget meetings in February with the Board of Education. Uh, in, in, in addition to that, I'm going to be meeting with a, uh, group of about twenty, maybe twenty-five community members. Uh, we call them our thought partners, a wide range of community members that give us great input. We run ideas by them. They talk to us about it. Uh, the pros and the cons of those ideas give us great, again, input. And, uh, ways to also support the communication of our budget strategy moving forward. Our goal will be to be as transparent as possible with that strategy and with those strategies moving forward as we did last year. Um, we don't know exactly what our situation is, especially from the revenue standpoint. Uh, some, some good news will be as if we get the full state aid, not only for this year that we're supposed to get. Uh, but at least the same and potentially more state aid for next year. That would be huge. That would be very positive. Uh, if we can solidify the federal support through, uh, If we can solidify the federal support through, through FEMA as well as the CARES Act that has been promised to us. If we can solidify that money from the federal government that was promised to us, that will be critically important. And then we're going to continue, and I can tell you this as superintendent, working very closely with the leadership staff to continue to look at efficiencies. In our programs, not to cut programming. That's not our goal at this point. Our goal is to keep programming, but be as efficient as possible with our staffing to support the all-important activities and experiences that kids have. Throughout a school year. That work is being done. We're going to talk more about that, especially in the February, two board meetings that we're going to update the budget. And the combination of looking for efficiencies with our expenditures. And then hopefully getting some good news around our revenue, both at the state and the federal level. Will really go a long way in helping to balance that challenging need of a school district, which is to support our kids and their programming. But also not break the backs of our taxpayers, as you well know. So we're going to continue to talk about that, give, give specific updates. And I do believe that as we move through February and get into the beginning of March, we're going to have a much clearer picture of what we need to do with our budget. And, and just be upfront about that and transparent about it. Before I leave, I wanted to give a few shout outs to, I could do 20 of them, but certainly three to four of these are really important for now. Right now, I want to shout out to Leah Kedley, our fantastic assistant principal at the primary school. Leah has successively become the new elementary principal at the Pittsburgh Central School District. A neighboring district friend of ours at Pittsburgh Central School. So shout out to Leah for her three and a half years of tremendous work as assistant principal at the primary school. We're going to miss you. You're a great leader and it's our loss and their gain in this case. So, but I know it's great for you and your, your future. And I know you're going to do fantastic work in the Pittsburgh School District. So congrats to Leah and her promotion to principal at Pittsburgh. Also getting to student experiences that we are still doing now and hopefully moving. We'd love to move it from the virtual to the in-person level, which is our incredible DECA groups. DECA has had, had another great regional competition for our DECA members on December 21st during a virtual ceremony. Twenty-two students earned trophies in individual events. And 16 teams earned trophies in team decision-making events. In addition, eight new DECA members earned ribbons in the principal event category. All the finalists have earned the opportunity to compete at the virtual state career conference in March. We're incredibly proud of our entire chapter and make sure you go to our website for more information. Actually, one of the first things I was able to witness when I took over last February was the, I believe it was the state DECA conference that was held in Rochester. And it was incredible and it was fantastic to see our students participate in that. DECA is a great business event, a group that, that goes through a lot of authentic learning experiences and sets up our kids for a lot of success in the future. So I can't thank DECA and the work that people are doing advising DECA enough. And then third, can't forget this group. I want to thank our PTSA. One of the things that, you know, kind of goes unnoticed with all the work the PTSA does is the Wellness Committee that is run through the BTSA. And they've been offering free virtual series on parenting mindfully, which have been unbelievable hits. I think they're almost harder to, to get a place in there than get a ticket to a, to a Bills playoff game. We have, let's see, four sessions, January 19th, January 26th, February 2nd and February 9th. From, what is it? Actually, I think it was from seven to eight 15:00 PM. A hundred, over a hundred spaces for each of these sessions, but they've all been filled up from my understanding. Now, if I mess this up, I know I'll be corrected, rightfully so by our PTSA. But I believe they're all booked, the live sessions. But the great news is they're being taped. So at least for the week after each session, you can view the parenting mindfully series that started on January 19th. So that is being, is taped right now and that's, you can visit over the next week, at least through Sunday. And then you'll be able to watch the 26th, the 2nd and the 9th as well. Really encourage you to think about that and watch those. Those are fantastic opportunities by our PTSA, again called Parenting Mindfully. And great ideas. And I know it's been a huge hit. And I just want to thank our PTSA for that collaboration between school and home. You've been doing it for hundred, for years and years and years, long before I was here. But the Victor PTSA, along with Pi and Voice Groups are, are, are great representatives of our district and certainly great ambassadors. And I week with, meet with them on a monthly basis and get some great ideas and information from that group. So thank you to our PTSA. That's about it for tonight. We are going to be back on February 24th, Wednesday night. So I'm thinking just generally February and March, we're going to have some great guests on. Most likely students, at least in one of the group, maybe both months. Then we're going to do, we'll touch upon the budget, especially in the February Town Hall a little bit. And then actually probably even more the March Town Hall, we're going to touch more on the budget. And then April, we're going to do our budget work, another budget presentation that'll take up the entire Town Hall in April. So budgeting, second part of the March Town Hall and the April Town Hall. And certainly some great guests, probably students on, and there's so many to choose from in the February Town Hall. And, and we want to do these once a month. I encourage you to go to your school's website. And there's a ton of communication on each of the building websites. If you have any challenges or issues that, with, with the situation with your child, you know, start right at the, at the focal point, which is typically try to problem solve with your child's teacher. If you still need to problem solve, go to your child's counselor and/or then the principal of that building. And really try to work out those situations at the building level with the people that are there for your kids and know the most about what's going on with your child. You can always reach out to me as superintendent. And of course I will remind everybody about the process I just said. But certainly you can reach out to me, especially though with me, bigger concepts, bigger questions. Bigger situations that you want me to know about and that you can problem solve with. So thanks so much for tuning in. Appreciate the conversation and have a great evening, everybody. Take care.